Have to balance it all out.
Thanks, Joe. I feel tons better.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, feel the sun and the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott is stuck on traffic on his way here. Must be a crash or something like that, so he'll be here as quick as he can. Beyond his control.
Agenda review?
Looks good. Thank you.
I wanted to ask if the council wouldn't mind if we could table item nine?
Negative hog. Nope. It's going through.
Okay, with the three bids?
Yeah, we have three bids.
Right.
Yeah. You got a problem with putting a flag up, Ms. Flynn?
No, I do not have a problem with the flag.
Okay. The bids can get up. We've already talked to them. We can get it up and get it done. And they said hopefully six months we can get it up, so.
I just thought it was excessive.
You can vote no for the flag, Ms. Flynn.
Oh, no, I like the flag. It just...
There it's...
I just looking for more cost.
And they're expensive.
I know.
Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay. We're good for that. Public comment? Anybody in the audience want to speak on anything that's not on the agenda?
Farmer Banks, Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, the quintessential fruit slash vegetable, the tomato. You can plant it now. It likes the cool weather months, fall and winter. A couple hacks about it. First of all, get in the ground now. Secondly, when the brown leaves start forming on the bottom, clip them off, put them right down underneath the plant. It's actually fertilizer for it. The other thing is Everglades tomatoes are indigenous or they're native to Florida, and they grow like weeds. The only problem with them, they're very small, but they will give you many, many tomatoes. And they will grow until roughly June, possibly July. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, what is the fundamental right of our constitutional republic, representative democracy? Is it the right to speech, freedom of speech? Is it freedom to worship whoever we want to worship? Or is it the right to vote? My view is that it is the right to vote, because without the right to vote, we have no representation, we have no voice, and we have no democracy. So how do we ensure to make, how do we ensure to make voting a part of the process and in our daily lives and every year? Couple ideas. One is we can make a national holiday, the first Tuesday of November of every year, a celebration and awareness to vote. Secondly, we can do what Australia does, and they fine those who do not vote. In America, we fine those who do not pay their fair share of taxes, and I'm pretty sure everyone in earshot will agree with me that voting is more important than taxes. And then the third thing is those who say, "I do not vote because my vote does not matter," you can agree with them. They're, you're absolutely right, because if you do not vote, your vote will not matter. So I encourage my fellow citizens to participate, to take ownership of their own government, to vote, to participate, because we choose our representation. Many times, our representation does not choose us. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. May you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Project updates. You want to get to the projects? Are you good with that right now?
I'm good for it right now.
Okay, we're gonna pass them. Project update, good. I would like, so we didn't get tabled, so we will talk. Landscaping looks nice, so, what I saw. I haven't been up in a while, but it looked good. Consent agenda? Anybody in the audience have anything to say about the consent agenda?
Are we moving project updates?
We just...
I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
He's not. We're not doing it.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear anything.
We said that landscaping looked nice.
Oh.
That was it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything on the consent agenda? If not, I can get a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the city manager's consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Keeping with the theme of project updates, bid award for the Grassy Lake improvements.
That's what I saw.
Any questions, concerns about this one? Do you need to read it, Mark? This is the award, bid award for Educational Boulevard, Grassy Lake. Consider the request to be approval of a bid award to Superior Asphalt. One point two four five zero zero one.
Just a question, Mark, just housekeeping. I'm assuming we received more than one bid, and this is the fairest out of the three, based on our criteria?
We did, and this was so fair. It took our engineers a little while to just double check and make triple sure that they would be able to perform. And our engineer here, Beau, is here, if you have any questions on that. Understand some of this is contingent on county funding as well. We did get a million dollars from the state for design, and then whatever's left over, be rolled into construction, and we're working with the county on the remainder of the funding.
So Beau put his credit card down in case it goes over, right?
Yes, sir.
Charge it ahead. Thanks, Beau.
Okay. So, with that said, anybody in the audience bring back the council for approval?
I make a motion to approve item seven, bid award for Education Avenue and Grassy Lake Road Access Improvements.
Who got a first? Who got a second?
I'll second.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Accommodation for certified recovery residences?
Do you want me to read the ordinance part that Scott normally reads?
Yeah.
Okay. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mineola, Florida, amending chapter one or two of the Land Development Code of the City of Mineola to establish procedures for the requests for reasonable accommodation for certified recovery residences and other persons with disabilities, providing for purpose, application, review, appeal, and enforcement procedures, providing for annual recertification, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is something that the legislature passed in July that we have to have this ordinance. It's basically saying we have to accommodate anybody who has special needs, and there's an application process for it to inspect the facilities and make sure the proper registration. If it's, if it's a facility or if it's individuals that we need to make special accommodations for. So this, like I said, this is a requirement. It will not be, second hearing will not be until the second meeting in December because the meetings are so close together and because of advertising requirements.
So no voting will be done today?
Right.
No voting, no voting till the second meeting in December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number nine. Item number nine was for a flagpole. And it says 200,000 because the numbers came in a big range, anywhere from about 100 and a quarter to 195,000 was the total. It's for a large flagpole to go at the wastewater treatment plant next to the Mineola wastewater treatment, right next to the water tower with the seal. Just showing our support for America, putting Mineola on the map. When people come down the turnpike, they'll say, "Do you see the big flag?" I think it'll look beautiful, showing Mineola off. Just an idea that came up. If council's not for it, I think it'd be great for Mineola's support of America. He does have three. He did get three. If you think the number's too high, we could probably crank it down to about 175, I think. We could not exceed 175, but it looks like it's more about a buck and a half.
What budget this is getting pulled from?
At the time, we didn't have the bid that we have today, so the 30-foot, 130-foot flagpole is 104, I think, and then I would add a little bit for contingencies. We're gonna try to use the soil borings from previous testing we've done to save funds. We still have some electrical work to do, so maybe add 30,000 just to be on the safe side, not to exceed 134.
He was asking where the funds were from.
Yeah, where the funds are being allocated from.
Oh, I'm sorry. That'll become out of the general fund.
I just think it's one of the things that when people go down the turnpike, it puts Mineola on the map. We like, see the big flag. It's not around the neighborhood, so it's kind of out in the middle, but the path through that you'll get will be amazing. Anybody in the audience want to speak on this? Counsel? Vice Mayor, any comments?
I think it's a great idea. I know where your heart is and the intentions. It is a costly bill, but I'm trying to see what... They're not inexpensive at all, and I hate to use the word cheap, because cheap is quality. And, you know, the quality is great. It's the cost. But I do know that they're not inexpensive at all. But I think it is a, I think your intentions and your heart is in the right place. Thank you.
Ms. Flynn, any comments?
Know that I will apologize. Now, I thought this was the flag for the veterans. I don't know where I misread it, but my fault. But no, I think it's beautiful. I, when I first saw it, I thought it was for the veterans, and I thought, oh, my gosh, that's a big flag for them. So I'm not sure where I read it, so my apologies, but I think it's gonna be great.
It's far away, and I think the cost incurred is, the flagpole's about 100,000 for the flagpole.
It is.
A lot of it is the statute of making sure that you get proper lighting at night and all that stuff. And you just can't get a postal digger to put a flagpole in.
No, not for that big.
I mean, it is on there. It says flagpole location, and you could see it on there, so it's definitely not something for the memorial. It's way too big for that.
No, I misread it.
It's fine. Those things happen. Mr. Hernandez?
I already answered, answered my questions.
Mr. Saunders?
I think it's a safety hazard. It's right next to the highway. If that pole comes down anywhere near the highway, it's gonna kill somebody. The flag tears off and lands on the highway, it'll cause an accident. The flag is gonna be up all the time, I guess. That would be my guess. And if it's up all the time, it has to be lighted.
That's why.
That's the law.
That's the law.
And if it's lighted, to meet with city code, it has to be dark sky lighted. Either that or it's not conforming to city code.
I think flags have a different statute. I think the flags have a different ruling on them than a...
In the code?
In general. I think it's, they had the same, they had the same thing came up in Claremont over the...
I don't know all the codes, so it's just an opinion.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the cost, I guess the cost is probably flexible. It'll cost maybe a little bit more than what we think, maybe a little less, but it's gonna be an ongoing cost. To put that flag up, take it down, is gonna take three to four people. Especially if it's 30 feet by 60 feet. It would take four people to handle that, one at the beginning, one at the end, and two in the middle. And of course, it's gotta be controlled to go up and down motor-driven, I would guess. And motor-driven, it's gonna have to be controlled either on-site or remotely, or both. I'm not sure how you'd do that. And obviously, it's gotta be buried 15 feet into the ground, 12 to 15 feet into the ground to withstand a reasonable hurricane. And a bad hurricane, well, God knows what, I guess it would be rated for about 100 to 110 miles per hour.
140 is what they usually do.
140? Is that what it's spec for? Well, I guess that's, that's probably about as strong a hurricane as we'd ever get here. By the time it leaves the ocean and comes on shore, they usually taper down.
I'll be two states up to 140. I lived through Andrew, so not doing that again.
Did you really?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't even, I didn't even think you were alive during Andrew.
I was alive during Andrew.
That was what, 200 miles an hour?
160 when she hit, or when he hit.
Probably felt like 200 miles an hour.
At times, yeah.
I'm glad I wasn't there. I don't know. There's, I have a lot of concerns about it being an ongoing expense. There's gonna have to be somebody who's in charge of it, maintain it, and, you know, flags will rip.
That's why you buy two flags.
The what?
That's why you buy two flags, unlike the sign where...
Two, maybe three.
Well, you at least have, always have a backup.
Which means you gotta have a place to store it. I don't know where that would be, but...
The room right behind us. The room right behind us.
Really?
Sure. It's got a loading dock on the other side. You can just pack up and drive.
Do you know how much it weighs?
There's a loading dock and a bunch of people.
I can visualize a fork truck picking the thing up at 30 by 60 feet, but I don't really know.
Well, they delivered those blue tarps. Those were pretty heavy. Those were at what, 100 by 100, Mark? How big were the tarps? 100 by 100?
Were the what now?
The tarps that we had.
Yes, we have 100, 100-foot tarps.
Yeah, we had 100 by 100 tarps that we stored. We bought them for the hurricanes a few years ago.
Yeah, I remember that. They must be heavy as hell. I don't know. I couldn't pick it up. I couldn't pick up the flag either, but, so it's, it's an ongoing expense that we're gonna have to support in perpetuity, I guess. We're not gonna put it up and then, then abandon it. We, I don't think we would do that. So I, I don't know. It seems to be a lot of issues relative to it. I'm not, I'm not saying it wouldn't look nice or it wouldn't be great and all that. Aesthetically, I have as much love for the flag as most people who think they're Americans have. But from what I gathered from the, from the picture that I saw, it's gonna hang over the highway if the wind blows from west to east. And I'm not sure that's a good thing. I don't think the Turnpike Authority would think it's a good thing, but I would assume we're gonna have to get permission from the Turnpike Authority.
There's permitting that has to be done. There's also air traffic. You have to happen with, there's already a antenna out there sitting 100 yards over from it, so it's...
About 150 feet, you're gonna have to blink a light on it?
200 feet.
200 feet?
It's gonna look...
I don't know. There's a lot of issues.
It's gonna look similar to the one that's in Claremont.
Yeah, it's a...
And when it blows, it's pretty...
From what I've heard, they have them at most of the...
Car dealerships.
The...
They have the one at, yeah, I'm not sure how big the one at Toyota is, though.
That one's big.
At Toyota?
I think that one's bigger than, that one's, the pole is the same size. The flag is too big for the pole. Flag is too big for the pole.
Yeah, that's a big flag.
Yeah.
I mean, it looks beautiful from afar.
Yeah.
So I'm just concerned that it's a safety issue, so close to the highway.
So considering his safety, him making that comment for a safety issue, is there any way that it can be moved? Is there room for adjusting the location, or is that dead set?
It's, it's, it's rather tight because that spot was located because of future expansion, and there's gonna be things that are in the way of what, wouldn't be in the way today, but they will be in the future. And then also to allow some space.
No, you definitely don't. Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm asking, just 'cause Joe made a good point, you know?
Yeah, there's a little bit of wiggle room, but not much.
Okay.
There must be some reason why people don't do this often. That flag that's at the Ivy store is kinda unique.
Yeah, because it's...
But when you think of them, the one that's in the roundabout in Taveries is pretty big, too, and it's sitting right on a road.
Yeah.
So when you go to the roundabout in Taveries...
If you think about where the, all the other ones are placed...
Yeah, the one on the roundabout, the roundabout in downtown Taveries, it's not this big of a flag, but it's a big flag overhanging the road, a lot of traffic. So it's, they have the same, the things that you're saying, it's the same concept.
We could, we could put it further back towards Sullivan, but it would be less visible, potentially.
I don't know. It's a big endeavor, if you ask me.
Go bigger, go home, is what Sam told me one day on this one. So...
Can we do a roll call vote?
Yeah. We can. Can I get a motion and a second so we can do a roll call of it?
Make a motion to approve purchase requests, or item nine purchase requests for the flagpole.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
First and a second? Vice Mayor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to acceptance of disposal of donated land from JTD Land at Grassy Lake. This is the triangle parcel sitting next to, between the cell tower. That is, that is a cell tower, correct?
It surrounds that lattice tower on Citrus Grove.
The lattice tower and the Crichton property, so. So basically, when we did Founder's Ridge, when we did...
Overlook.
Overlook. That was a parcel that, there was this oddball piece that they kinda threw in as a, oh, we're donating land into the city, and we finally got it.
Well, I, I think they wanted to get rid of it.
It was, but we would like to accept it, so we have it, and then give Mark, like to accept and then let Mark work. We have some, a potential buyer of the property. Basically, somebody up there who wants to leverage some other property, the Crichton property, I think, wants to, who is next to it, kinda wants to... So that Crichton wants to, potential buyers of Crichton, I think, want to...
Also purchase this one and join it together.
Yeah, and that way, it's not a great piece, but it allows them, because Crichton is nice, and this would be like, okay, this is where a runoff's gonna go.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm right.
So, anybody in the audience?
We needed a vote to accept the property and then...
I'm gonna have the audience input first.
Sorry. All three of them?
Yeah. Got anything? Okay, we'll bring it back. Can I get a motion to approve the acceptance?
So moved?
Can I get a second?
A second?
First and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Final public comment?
Mr. Councils, Will, if y'all are, there's a consensus to dispose of that property, we can start that process. There's some steps we have to follow.
Can we give Mark consent, kind of, for consensus to him, start having conversations with potential land buyers just to get a idea?
Need to get an appraisal with advertising in the paper.
Right.
Yep.
And I just think it's for us, I mean, we don't really have a personal, but it's gotta be fair market value.
Yeah.
So, yeah, definitely. Maybe it'll pay for a flagpole.
Could be.
Oh, gosh.
I don't wanna put the flagpole for the pole, though.
Oh, God. It's gonna be waving in the air.
Yeah. Okay. Mark, anything?
I have a few things. I'll try to make it...
Before you wrap, and Scott doesn't walk in, then he can't bill us.
I know. No. Poor thing. You might as well just call him and tell him, don't even go any further.
He might be coming to tell us something stellar that he's for his...
Yeah, there must be, he called well before the meeting. He'd been sitting in traffic standstill for 10 minutes at that point, so it's... He said there was helicopters and...
There was one this morning, too, was there not? There was a bike thing, a bicyclist this morning on 455 that sideswiped, so.
Did you say plane crash? Oh, car. They said plane crash.
City Hall will be closing November 27th and 28th for Thanksgiving. We're, we're trying to schedule the tentative ribbon cutting for the new fire station. We're looking at December 19th at 4:30. It's on a Friday. If not, it's right up, coming up into the holidays, but if y'all can't make it then, then a second plan may be that following Saturday. Can y'all do December 19th on Friday at 4:30?
Yes, not the 20th, but 19th, yes.
The 19th you can. Everybody else? 4:30 is good? Okay. All right, so we'll get that scheduled and work on that. We're working with the hospital to allow some, they're sort of in a rush to get these implemented. They have some temporary staffing trailers. One is for inter-facility transports between hospitals that they do themselves. The other's for a Lake County ambulance. other's for a Lake County ambulance, um, so just letting y'all know about that. We're gonna try to just handle it at the staff level, they're supposed to be temporary. We're gonna do thirty-six months and, and, uh, reevaluate it then, but they're, really need to get those ambulances in place and be able to house the staff, so...
Kinda nice to have ambulances in here, so that's good.
I apologize, on the nineteenth, what time were you thinking about the ribbon cutting?
Um, four thirty PM.
Four thirty, thank you.
Yeah, make sure you're there pimp four thirty AM, though.
Oh, you got jokes.
Um, we continue to work on the vandalisms at Trailhead Park, we'll let you know more as we know more. Uh, the Mineola Market was moved forward a week because of the holiday, so it'll be tomorrow. Also, we're having a meeting with Consensus, that social media management company, this Thursday. Uh, they have an addendum to the contract they're proposing, and also just a game plan going forward, so we're having a meeting with them. Councilman Hernandez will be there as well. Some quick things, Meadow Park Drive, there were, sidewalks are really bad there. Um, we had a company come in, the roots were cut, they installed root barriers, and a new sidewalk was poured. Uh, they had to go back and do some sod work, but for the most part, that job is done. We had, we did some stormwater improvements on Cumberland Circle in the old part of town, and then also on East Ri, at the East Ridge Water Plant, and that's all.
Anything for the city manager?
No, thank you.
Mark, what are you seeing on the, um, Trailhead Improvement Contract? Is that been signed?
Yeah, so a matter of fact, uh, that, those terms were agreed upon today, and so the company's gonna sign that agreement and FedEx it over to us, and then the mayor will sign it, and we'll be rocking and rolling.
If you need me to come in, I don't, don't need to wait till the next meeting, so as soon as it comes available, just sign it.
We can move forward on that.
Just text me, and I'll, I'm in, um, I'll make sure if it's, you know, if they FedEx it this week, I'll come, I'll make sure I'm here.
Okay.
Okay?
Let me know when it's signed, Mark, 'cause I know that they wanna start doing community engagement after it's signed, so I'm gonna work with them, and I'll work with you on that.
Okay.
And was the crash gate on Parkview, was that closed? Remember I sent you the picture?
Yeah, as far as I know, it has been. If it hasn't, let me know.
All right, I'll drive by there tonight.
Yeah, I can double-check it again, also. I, I can also have one of our firefighters double-check, make sure the click to enter's working.
All right, yeah, I'll just drive by there, you know, and I'll check. And then Lieutenant, sorry to hear, sorry to put you in the spot, uh, we did have, or I got complaints from some neighbors of drag racing on Citrus Grove at night. Have you heard about that?
I have.
Which end?
Ru, uh, behind Parkview, behind Publix, heading towards the bridge.
So behind Publix?
Oh, really? Yeah, between the, uh, between the curve, the ninety-degree curve and the Publix, uh, we did get that as well. And I had the guys step up patrols over there...
Okay.
To, uh, keep an eye on that, and it, it's happening late, like two or three in the morning, uh, you know, two and three to like four, four-thirty is, is when it's happening.
I usually leave around three AM, but no, I'm just kidding, that's not me.
So... And I don't know if you're where, we had a crash there a couple months ago, month, month or two ago, where they took out part of the, uh, power pole there, or not a power pole, but one of the transformers leading to it, um, which caused outage. Matter of fact, it was the, the vehicle, we hit and run, and we found a driver. Uh, we don't know if they were a part of that, but they were certainly moving at a pretty good pace from the damage that occurred. But we're stepping up patrols in that area for it.
Perfect, awesome, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Since you brought it up, you'll close the Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Um, I would, I know DeSantis signed a bill to close state for the Friday after Christmas and the Friday after, um...
New Year's.
New Year's.
Does council have a problem if we make that a vacation, uh, once vacation day for our employees? Go ahead and make those that Friday, so it gives them a long four-day weekend. And it was like what on in my life, that I think family's important to me, and as much I can spend time with them, gives them opportunity to get back to them. So, just, yeah, I was, I would've done Thursday, too, but Thursday's already given holiday for me, so...
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pam, anything?
Um, no, just happy Thanksgiving, everyone, enjoy it with your friends and family, and be safe. Thank you.
Debbie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Anything?
Nope, I'm good. No, thank you.
I got a couple of things, um, just to think about. One is for you.
Oh.
Personally.
Oh. Hello, Scott.
He is billable.
Damn.
I did send you a text message, sir.
Um, it is for you. I know that you're, on your parks and rec, you're focused on the hole in the ground hills.
Yes.
To put something else on your plate, they've cleared all the land on Sugarloaf.
Yep.
Um, and we do have that parcel on the top of Sugarloaf.
I thought about it earlier, yep.
So, I just, it's not gonna happen the next six months, but somehow it's come up with a plan of how you're going to, what your vision or what the vision is there, because there is that opportunity when you have the three parks of the hole in the ground, the overlook and that. If somebody doesn't like this, it's a way to, oh, well, it will fit better here, it will fit better there.
Sure, yeah.
Just, I saw it cleared up, for those who haven't been, they took out some trees up there.
They did. Yeah.
They left all the pines.
I got some complaints, but unfortunately, it's, um, yeah, they can...
But it's all ag and...
Correct, it is all ag.
I mean, it's nothing you can do, because at one point in time, that was all orange groves.
Correct, correct, yeah, it's all, it's all agricultural trees, there's, it's...
Yeah, but I mean, they, they took them out, but I am sad that it's happened, but I'm happy they did it all at once and they didn't...
Piece by little, yeah, little by little, yeah.
Like do one, then do another, and do another. Which is really important that they did it, because they are, I know, the property appraiser's really looking at agalans right now for commercials, so they had to, they pointed out.
Do something correct, yeah.
So Sugarloaf was one. The, how did it was one? I would like for council to entertain the thought, and it's just the thought process, there are possible properties on Lake Shore Drive. Some people are older, um, and not know what they're gonna do with their houses, but possibly an opportunity to purchase some, you know, I did, Scott, I talked to Scott about it a while back, I don't know if he ever got with the landowners, but possibly purchase a piece of property there with like a lease buyback, where we go ahead and purchase it now, they get the money, then they live there through till they get older, but then we get the land. Is that something, it's pretty much on the lake shore, right on the trail, is that something that, you know, would be entertaining, the thought process to do, is to make it as a park, not to, if not, it'll just be tore down for another house, but this way, it'd be a good, nice park in Mineola on the...
A good trail. It depends on final cost of the property, 'cause it's not gonna go cheap.
And it, that's something that Scott can work with, and I agree, I, no, I agree, we're not, if it's valued at X, we're not paying three X or whatever.
Right.
But, but X is, I think X is high, too, so we just need to look at...
Yeah, we just see the...
But I, I'm just saying it's something that, as a council, not that we're committing to, but can we ask Scott to, um, just reach out, Scott and Mark to reach out to the homeowners and just...
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
See what it looks like, and then bring it back, and if it doesn't work, it, it doesn't, I'm fine with that, I just was like, maybe it's an opportunity...
I'm good with that.
For that, okay. And the last one is, just to keep up with, um, the other thing that we did is, we have, for your purpose, we have budgeted this, this is a budgeted item, it's, you like to hear that first.
Appreciate that, I'm good.
Holiday bonus, our Christmas, no, I say Christmas, annual bonuses for employees. I was, I, I'm gonna just throw something out there, and then us as a council can discuss, but anything over ten years, like a thousand dollars, anything over, um, five years, seven fifty, anything over three, five hundred, and anybody new, two fifty? Does that sound doable? That would be, I'm, I just say that's a good breakdown, unless somebody likes something else out. Is that...
That was similar to last year, too, right?
Yeah. So we're good with that. I know, I usually throw this out like the week before Christmas, and it kills HR and payroll, and it kills, I'm just, I wanted to bring it up this evening, just to let them plan that maybe, hopefully, they can target to get it out, get paid two, twice a month? The middle of December, so it gives them that time.
Okay with that.
So do we need to make a motion on that? Scott, you wanna earn your pay? Answer a question.
You wouldn't have to, but if you wanted to, I'm sure the city manager would appreciate the support.
So...
Be nice to hear that this is all coming from council.
Yeah, with council...
Absolutely.
May council make a, for annual bonuses? Make a motion?
No, not to be a stickler, 'cause we've gotten in trouble, does, does this have